Okay, you're good. All right. Good evening and welcome to the October 26th meeting of this Select Board per RSA 91A under the emergency provisions and it's Chair of the Barrington Planning Board. I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously through this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation can be achieved by dialing 603-664-0240 and entering conference ID 676-749-973. Video participation can be done by clicking on the link BIT.LY/BARRSB. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams. Phone and video instructions have been provided on the website of the Town of Barrington at www.barrington.nh.gov. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anybody has any problems, please dial 603-664-0146 or email at administration@barrington.nh.gov. Adjourning the meeting if the public's unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes will be taken during its meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call vote for attendance with each member stating their presence. Please also state where there is, whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. And I will start with Mr. Air, please.
Daniel Air, I'm at 334 Old Concord Turnpike. There was no one in here to inspect vote. Doors are locked.
All right. Select Person Bailey?
You're muted. You're still muted.
Get in here, George.
Connor muted me.
There you go.
My name is George Bailey, 19 Chesley Drive. I'm in my office. There's nobody in this office to influence my vote. The only member of the family is Gene, which is downstairs.
Jim Sikosha, 21, James Henry Drive, home alone, just with my pups.
His Select Person Hardikoff joined us.
I believe so.
Yeah, I'll let you take roll call, Andy, and then I'll take over.
All right. Andrew Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. My wife, my son, and our three-legged golden doodle are here in the house with me, and I will pass it over to Tracy. And I would, I would echo the fact that I'm pretty sure that my prediction before this that I made to Connor may be coming true.
I'm not sure what that was, but okay. So Select Person, go ahead.
Just that you're, just that you're holding off long enough to get on the call, so I have to read that god-awful emergency provision.
I think that you did wonderfully. I was so proud of you. Select Person Hardikoff, 48, Stone Farm Drive. I am home with my son, my husband, and my Bernese mountain dog. No one will be influencing my vote. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Connor, I'm just letting you know that for some reason, my computer just froze for a few seconds, so let's hope we don't have a repeat of last week. Andy, you might be on again. Who knows?
Honestly, thanks, buddy.
Yeah, so, we have public hearing on the agenda, but we have no public hearings. Is that correct, T A. MacGyver?
Correct.
Okay, so we have three appointments, beginning with Daniel Cassidy and ending with Jack Gail. At any time as we're discussing the appointments, if we need to move to non-public for any reason, please just indicate it. So before us is an application for a full Conservation Commission member for Daniel Cassidy. The term would expire March of 2023. If anyone has a reason to move to non-public, please let us know. Go ahead, George Bailey. You have your hand up.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Cassidy to the Conservation Commission as a full member.
Excellent. Do I have a second? I would second that motion. Roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air. There's no other discussion.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you very much for being willing to do that, Daniel Cassidy. Next up is an alternate member with a term that expires in March of 2022 for Jennifer Stewart to the Conservation Commission. Does anyone need to move to non-public?
I do not have any material on this candidate. I'd like to move it to the next meeting.
I didn't see any material on Jennifer either. Do we have the application, Connor?
No. Nope, I'm happy to ask the Chair of the Conservation Commission to make sure we have one before the Select Board makes a decision and perfectly happy with it being postponed to the next meeting.
Yep. Do we have the information on Jack Gail? I'm familiar with this individual, but I don't know if we got his application.
That came in today.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I forwarded to the board today. Mr. Gail had mailed it to the town, so there was a slight delay. But that wasn't.
I'm very, yeah. I'm very familiar with his work on the Trails Committee. Does anyone need to move to non-public in reference to Jack Gail?
No.
No? Would anyone like to make a motion to accept him as the Commission alternate expiring March of 2022 for the Conservation Commission?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Okay, and I would second that. Roll call vote beginning with Select Person. Oh, Andy, you have your hand up. Did you want to discuss something?
No, I was putting it up to either make the motion or second it. But you guys did it all right.
So roll call vote beginning with Select Person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Something's coming up saying that my network is causing poor call quality. This will be interesting, folks. Sorry about that. Next up on the agenda is the Budget Presentation presented by John Huckins, our Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer.
Okay, so we're supposed to start off a little trivia. The first known building code was 5,000 years ago in the Babylonian Empire, and it really wasn't a code like we have today. If the builder built the house and the owner, the house caved in and the owner got killed, the builder was put to death. Yeah.
Better be careful, John.
Yeah. Yeah, and if the house fell in and killed its son, then the builder's son was put to death. If it fell in and it killed his slave, then the owner had to give, the builder had to give his slave to the owner of the house. I just thought that was kind of interesting how codes have changed quite a bit in the last 5,000 years.
Right.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I wouldn't do this job, I don't think, if it's the other way. So as far as my budget goes, the first line that was overspent by more than 10% was the one for overtime. And that was, I've taken on some temporary chores that have increased the amount of time I had to put in. So, I don't know, anybody, just keep moving forward.
Please.
Okay, the next one was my earned time buyout. Because of that added responsibility I took, I wasn't able to take off the time that I normally do. So I ended up selling some of my time, and I'm increasing that budget next year to cover part of that too, because I'm going to be close to the maximum amount of hours that I can carry come the end of this year already as it is. So. The next one was the building equipment and vehicle maintenance. We underspent that line by more than 10%. I want to carry the same amount of money. The past years have showed that sometimes things go wrong and it costs some money. The car is 11 years old. We've been pretty lucky this year to continue to be lucky. I think we can get a few more years out of that car. The mileage is relatively low, consistent with cars in this area. It'll probably rot out before it dies. The building and copier maintenance. I'm not sure exactly how this contract is set up, but it seems like every year I have to pay more than I budgeted for. And this year, the only thing I can think of is because of the COVID thing, we got a lot more things where people are sending in applications and we're printing them out, and I'm not sure if the extra printing is what caused that to go over or not. But I want to carry the amount of money that we were charged this year just to cover it for next year. The building communication line was understated by more than 10%. We haven't upgraded our phones for quite a few years. These are for our cell phones. We're able to keep going with the old ones. And if we do upgrade, I carry the amount of money that would be needed. So if we had to replace the phones, that the cost would be covered. The building conferences and training. We underspent that line. Part of it is with the COVID thing, they stopped having training for a while. And then when they started doing the virtual training, they were actually doing them for free, but now they charge full rate for the training that we receive. But at the same time, I only had one certification that I got at the very beginning of the year, and we're not planning on trying to do any testing to get more certifications until this whole COVID thing is over, so I decreased that amount in that budget too. The next one was mileage and expenses. We're under by more than 10%, and I have decreased that too. Part of it is if we did go to some of these trainings and stuff, or if the town car broke down and we had to use our own vehicles to do stuff. So this past year, like I said, we were pretty lucky with the car. We had it all the time. And then Amanda didn't go to any trainings that she would have to use her own car for because of the COVID thing. It was all done with virtual training. And the way the program's working out, I wouldn't be surprised to see almost all trainings go that way in the future myself. I underspent the stuff on building office supplies. That's what I use for buying my building code books. Right now, we're under the 2015 code, and we had the 2015 code when this year started, the stuff we needed. The state, after going so long, we're trying to adopt from the 2009 to the 2015. And the political stuff that went back and forth, they kind of have this thing where they're trying to adopt one code cycle behind. So it's very possible that when the 2021 code comes out next year, that they're going to try to adopt the 18, one year behind. So that would give me some time to buy part of the books I need in the 2021 schedule and then in the 22 to make, so that we do have the books needed because we're supposed to have them available for the public if anybody comes in and wants to see them. The building operating supplies and my building uniform stuff, I underspent that by more than 10%. And we do have a need for still some more office supplies, and we didn't get any boots and stuff this year. But because my other lines on the thing for the overtime and stuff like that were overspent and trying to keep my total budget in line so that my total budget stayed under budget and didn't go over, I'm purposely not spending them lines thinking I can get through to next year before we have to worry about the stuff. We seem to have enough paper that we brought in, so we can get through that too. The building equipment line, we underspent that too. We were able to get two new computers, but was able to use COVID money so that we didn't have to use town funds to get that. But we have those computers in place now, so we won't have to upgrade anything next year. The rest of my budget is all pretty much staying flat across the board from where it was.
Thank you. Do we have the Advisory Budget Committee Chair on here? Steve, are you out there? If Steve is not available, is Peter Royce available?
No, I'm, this is Steve.
Oh, good. Thank you, Steve.
They finally announced that I was unmuted when I was trying.
Okay.
I want to thank the code agent for his proposal. It's a very good budget. It was very thorough, and I want to thank him for his presentation.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, oh, did the Select Board have any questions in reference to the Building Inspection and Code Enforcement Budget?
Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you. My, my only question is, is that as everybody remembers a long time ago that when we did this budget, we didn't ask questions or anything else, and we ended up at the end of that budget session staying till well past 12:30 at night. And is it my understanding or am I incorrect that if we don't ask any questions right now as to the different line items, that this is how it will come before us for the last time? And that's, it'll be almost like it's, this is what we approve of?
No, it is not. You will have a point in the budget process where you can ask to change any budget line item.
Thank you. Thank you.
Select Person Eric, go ahead.
I believe I read in the ABC Minutes, the fee increase said 25%. Is it going to be that much, you think?
It could be. It depends on how stuff is. We were looking at what our cost was and where we ran deficient. So there's a slight increase to the building permit fees. It's a dollar per thousand, which isn't a lot of money. But in the past, there's been no extra cost for the electrical because they included that in the total cost of whatever they were doing. So the electrical, the plumbing, the mechanicals were all included, so there was no additional fee. But we had to go out multiple times doing inspections. So what I proposed was a $50 flat fee, which covers going out to doing the inspection and then the occasional second inspection because something fails. And the ones that would have the biggest increase would be the small jobs, like the small renovations and stuff like that, where we end up going out and we're looking at a frame, we look at rough plumbing, we work out a rough electrical, we might do some mechanical stuff, and it's something where they only pay, you know, $400 or something for the whole permit or less. So this is, some of them would be higher than that and some would be lower percentage-wise. It depends on what the total job was.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I know you compared other surrounding areas too, and I just, I didn't think it was that much, the increase. I didn't realize it was that, so I'm sure people will ask questions about it.
Yeah, like I said, it's more than a little small job that had the biggest increase. The bigger jobs, the amount of difference is going to be minor. Thank you.
George, it looks like your hand is up. George, is your hand up? No? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So thank you, John, for your presentation. Next up is Marcia, our Town Planner with the Planning and Land Use Budget.
Hello, everyone. So for my little fun fact, I just, there's a picture up here, and I wanted to say the Barrington Historical Society is home to the first car ever registered in town, which by all accounts is also only the third registered auto in Stratford County. The auto is a 1908 International, which was purchased by the Swain family. The car could often be seen driving the roads of Barrington over the last 100 years. Calvin and Catherine Swain enjoyed participating in parades with the family's historic car. After Calvin and Catherine's death, grandson Peter Cook honored his grandfather's wish, donating the historic vehicle to the Barrington Historical Society so that it would be, remain a part of the history of town that meant so much to the Swain family. So that's my little tidbit. And it is at the Historical Society, they actually built a garage underneath the Historical Society, and it's housed there. So, yeah. And last I knew, it was still running. What was that?
Still running.
I thought that was the picture of your first date.
No, that's the Swains. That's Calvin.
Thank you.
That was, yeah, that was Calvin. But I thought that was pretty, pretty cool. All right. As for my budget, as most of you can see, it's pretty flat from last year. There were a few items that the Advisory Budget had asked about. One of them was the consultants line. In the past, we've used that for master plan fees and whatnot. Because of circumstances this year, we are still trying to close out the master plan that we started a couple of years ago. So that budget had been considerably more at the time, I want to say. It was $8,000. So for the last couple of years, I know Connor helped me with the budget last year because I was unavailable. We had dropped it to 3,000. I had actually have a conversation with Jen Sis from Regional Planning about assisting us with updating some of our regulations that haven't been done for a while. Jeff Brand from the Planning Board has volunteered to assist in that. So we don't have a specific, I, what I told Jen was not to exceed so that we could work with the amount that's budgeted as best we could. And she said that they would be flexible in assisting us. The forest and trails, the next item, these are ones Conservation Commission uses for different items. A lot of their trail work, it doesn't show money expended as of right now, but they're actually, I just got some receipts in that are not reflected in this. And this is an item that they usually expend the full amount. It's one of those end of the year, you get the receipts. Let's see. Copier lease, ditto to what John said. I happen to have a little bit left in the budget for the copier lease and maintenance. We also need to be, pick the ink for the large copier that we have that comes in useful. Actually, the scanning portion of it is very useful also. Communications, we've expended a little bit on that. I don't call that, that's not a critical line. But fees for miscellaneous items. Advertising is one of those items that it's a, it's a guesstimate because it all depends on what we get for applications. And we had to look back at historical data. I expect this by the end of the year, we'll have pretty much expended all of it because just this, this month, we have three new applications coming in. We have to post those in the newspaper, and that's gotten quite pricey over the last couple of years. Education and outreach, that's another Conservation Commission line that they use for some of their outreach work they do. Conferences and training. We did just recently, actually in the last week, are going to submit some fees for, for conferences and training, just like John said, with the whole COVID. We did not have the conferences that to send folks to or even myself to go to. So that budget is still at 100, it's at 1,800. We're probably going to have spent about 700 by the time we're done this year and have some left over. I would prefer not to reduce it or to reduce it if you choose to a small amount because in the future, we'd like to be able to take advantage of any of the course offerings. A lot of them have been free to this point, but even the one that we're just signing up for from the Municipal Association is $70 per participant, which is down from what it used to be when it was in person, but still $70 per participant is, is quite a bet. Registry of deeds, that's another, you know, it all depends on what we get in for plans that we have to record and items. So we, we've taken a historical guess at that. There's been very little used on mileage, but that's been, that's been reduced over the years too. There has some been mileage taken. It's just not reflected in, in the budget right here, right now. Let's see. Offices, office supplies is something that we've managed to, because that includes our paper. So we actually may go over budget slightly on that or take it from another line to balance out. And postage, that's another one where we have to just kind of guess approximately what we're going to have. Depends on exactly how many of butters we need to send notices to. And the equipment line, which the Advisory Budget had a question about, we've left $1,000 in there. We've used it for recorders. We've used it for, I think, my laptop at one point. We tend to expend it. Right now, we have a printer that we like, we use on a regular basis that we've had probably for close to 20 years. And it wasn't working for several days, and it must have a short because if you jiggle it just right, it starts working again. And if something should happen, we would like to replace that. Questions?
Yep. Select Person Bailey, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have one question, and that's under item 46, I mean, yeah, 4612 on the postage. I, I do not feel comfortable taking $1,000 off of that. I would, I would, I would, the lowest I would go with, that would be 3,500 because there again, as she had mentioned earlier in her budget preparation, COVID-19. So if something else comes up and they start having more, then we're going to have to have additional postage. So I think if we should just kick that up, $500.
Duly noted. Dan Air.
In your presentation, you mentioned the forest and trails. Do you have a number of what the receipts are they spent?
This, the one I'm looking at right now is the September 31st one. I know for trails, he just submitted receipts within the last couple of weeks. And I want to say it, I want to say they were $200 in receipts.
And then you carry no money for the Barrington Conservation anymore? Or is it another line?
Just these, just these lines.
375, that covers conferences, training too, therefore?
Oh, yes, we did take conferences and training. We do pay for Conservation Commission members to go to conferences out of the conferences and training line. I'm pretty flexible about that one, even if John runs out on his end. We will use that if we have money left on our end for conferences and training.
No, I was asking these questions because the Conservation is watching that budget pretty closely right now. And then they thought there was more money in your line item. I said, I don't think so.
Well, I have some left. I mean, we've paid in the past for their, some of their conferences they've gone to. Actually, I think we've covered most of them. Sometimes they go to more than we do, and if they approach me and we can do it, I'll do, you know, more than happy to take it out of the budget for them.
So could you say roughly the 7, 375 times that twice for money in your budget for, that's conservation or is that too high?
So what line are you looking at?
So if you do the 375, and then if they do conference, how much do you allow roughly in the past pay for conferences for them?
So if it's conferences and we have, I think, what did we have, 1,200, $1,400 or what was it? No, $1,800. Out of that $1,800, I try to take care of everyone's needs.
All right. But can, for conversation, can I say, $70 per person, say 350? For conversations or if they ask?
Oh, okay. You mean a portion of it? You know, they can, but they can also, let's see, what other lines do they have? I mean, that's fine. I mean, I don't mind, especially at this time. If they have something right now that they want to do, absolutely.
No, they, some of the members think there's all kinds of money in your budget for the, the use of conservation. And I've been saying, no, there's not. So I just want for rough conversation, saying it's not there, it's not budgeted.
I think seven, it's like a good number to say that there's, there's about 700 that might be earmarked for conservation, 375 in the trails, and then maybe up to 325 or thereabouts for training. I think that sounds like a good conversation point.
Yeah, you can take it from different pockets. That would be, that would work. Sure.
Danny, do you have anything else?
I'm all set.
George, you have your hand up. Would you like to speak?
I would. Thank you very much. I think that I would also ask the board and Marsha to consider earmarkings, putting some more in there if the Conservation Commission is going to attend these conferences and what have you. Because as Marsha said, well, she can go here or there, different other line items and transfer the money. And that's not what we're trying to do right now. We're just trying to set a budget. So I think that training is something that the RSA states that we have to provide. So I'm going to ask, you know, Mr. Ayer, does he think there's enough there? Or do you think that the Conservation Commission should have more money in there for conference trainings and what have you?
Thank you.
That was quick.
Go ahead, select person Ayer.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to do verify it with the budget. And then when I go to Conservation, I'll bring it up. And this town, there's roughly this money earmarked. And then if there's any more needed, we need a budget for it.
Very good. Okay. Do we have our Advisory Budget Committee chairperson to speak?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, thank you, Steve. Go right ahead.
Yes, Marsha did a pretty good job of answering the questions. And Connor included her, some of our question and her responses to those. The one thing that we discussed in the meeting that wasn't in the minutes and I, and I didn't hear it discussed here is the advertising budget. Because the historical spend on that has always been less than the budget. And there was some, some rationale that we discussed during our meeting and Connor brought to us that I think was important. So if you could share that with us, Marsha?
So for the advertising, that's money we actually collect from the applicants. And it goes back into what would be, I guess, the general fund or the general budget. We don't keep it ourselves, but we have to budget for the expense, even though we collect the money from the applicants.
Yes, I understand.
We charge them $75 per application for advertising.
Right. And the understanding is that it's becomes part of the allocations. And it's never, it, it, the reason we leave it even with the extra money there is so that we can receive that and, and use it in the budget. So I understand that. The Budget Committee also talked with Connor about this, this continuing theme of equipment. And printers, computers, laptops, all those kinds of things. And each person having to kind of fend for themselves. And Connor suggested that perhaps the Technology Committee could look at across the departments, all the different uses and come up with a consistent approach toward keeping us current in our technology. And I'm, and the Budget Committee wanted to provide the support to that suggestion. And because I think it would lead to a more organized approach to renewing our technology.
Very good. Steve? Yeah, go ahead.
I don't know if there are any other members of the committee that would like to chime in if we haven't covered all our questions?
Any other members of the Advisory Budget Committee wish to speak?
All right. Well, thank you, Marsha. That was very good.
I have Mr. Man Shrek, member of the Advisory Budget Committee.
Now, I just wanted to confirm what Steve said. I think it covered most of the things we discussed in our meeting.
Excellent. Thank you all for your hard work. And I was in my board meeting, so I missed the last meeting. But I'm sure, as usual, it was very productive. So thank you. We have next up, public comment. Public comment is limited to, yes?
Oh, I was just going to run through the additional documents real quick, if you would indulge me. Item F under appointments.
Oh, the ones that we're adding to our budget. You wanted to speak to that? I already had.
Okay, great. So as always, those are the documents included to add to your budget binder. The only one I really wanted to touch on for the benefit of the community was the update to the unassigned fund balance projection. So once the tax rate was set, we were able to have some of the, some more of the numbers filled in that we had previously estimated. And so the news was good. Based on the results of tax rate setting, Barrington's current unassigned fund balance represents 12.3% of the total general fund operating expenditures, which is just $62,000 less than the target of 12.5%. You'll remember earlier estimates put us at about 12.1%. So more favorable information there. And I also included in the update that if, as it stands right now, if the requested use of fund balance, which by my calculation totals $558,500, if we use that offset by the estimated addition to unassigned fund balance, we would be looking at an unassigned fund balance of 12.2%. So that gives the board and the Budget Committee some more information to consider as we evaluate the additional warrant articles funded from fund balance to start to see a clearer picture of where that utilization would put us financially this time next year. And the only other big document in there is the tax rate information, which is an agenda item, which I'll go over at that time. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Next up is public comment. I do have someone, so I have two Dan guests listed under participants. One has their hand up. Is, is it at all possible that select person Ayer is logged into this meeting twice?
No, that's Mr. Man Shrek is the second Dan guest. I just lowered his hand.
Thank you. So public comment, 15 minutes, maximum of three minutes per person. If you would like to speak, I'm going to set my timer for 30 seconds. You can call 664-0146. You can raise your hand by mousing over your screen and finding your toolbar to the Microsoft Teams application and using your hand to alert us. And if you're on the phone, you can press star six and unmute yourself and simply speak aloud so that we know that you're interested in speaking. And my timer's counting down.
Mr. Ayer has his hand up.
Go ahead, Dan.
Daniel Ayer, 334 Old Conker Turnpike. I'm sad I attended a trunk or treat and stuff in my brother's truck. And I honored him. And then Linda Seavey was our family accountant for years and stuff. And it was nice to hear little kids read her name and stuff. And people who knew Linda, we've really been impressed with that. And I also put a sticker on for Larry Smith on the thing, on his passing. And I wish there was more vendors there and stuff. It would, it was a good time and stuff. The kids really appreciated it. But due to the situation we're in with the COVID-19 and stuff, it was a good, happy day. Thank you.
Anyone else like to publicly speak for up to three minutes?
I see nothing else coming through, Madam Chair.
Very good. So we will move on to the review of the meeting minutes from October the 5th of 2020. Are there any changes or edits or requirements that we need to know about? For corrections to the October 5th meeting minutes? Go ahead, select person Bailey.
I want to thank Connor and his staff for updating those minutes that I had questions of for the last meeting. I appreciate that very much. And if nobody else has any other comments, I'd like to be the one who motioned to have it approved.
Do I have a second? Yeah, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a second by Vice Chair Knapp. Roll call vote, beginning with select person Ayer, please.
Ayer, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Seco, aye.
Artikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the review of meeting minutes from the October 19th meeting. Does anyone have any corrections? Go ahead, select, oh, I thought you were going to speak again, George. Any corrections? Seeing as there are no corrections, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the October 19th meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept.
The motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, select person Bailey. Roll call vote, beginning with select person Ayer.
I have a question. Are we voting on the mechanic position two in the minutes?
You're voting on the corrected 10/19 of 2020 meeting minutes.
What's the review of minutes, vote, and then see a cash minutes, 2020, 10/05?
Connor, do you want to share anything that would delay us in our, our vote?
The, Dan, the October 5th minutes were a carryover from the last meeting. And then the October 19th minutes were just from the last meeting. That's why we. So the board just approved the October 5th minutes. And now there's a motion to approve the October 19th minutes.
I'd like to reconsider the, reconsider because in it, we never took advantage of the mechanic position. I'd like to rescind my motion on it at this time.
Not sure I understand, Dan. What is it that you're asking us to consider?
Since the mechanic position was never fulfilled and it was canceled, I like to rescind my motion.
We, we already took care of that at the last meeting. So the, the select board at a prior meeting reverted back to the original position and position rating. That was already approved.
But these minutes are of information of record. And I don't want to go back on these minutes in the future.
Go ahead, select person Bailey.
I'd just like to remind select person Ayer that my motion last meeting was to turn around and get a definite, to have the minutes checked verbally, which was done by Connor and his staff. That's why I thanked them. Because I also was under the same impression that you're, that you're stating right now. And note, what they found on the other tape was that the attachment that's there was correct. So that's why I went ahead and made the motion to approve it. We did vote on the mechanic position, but we turned around and made a change to it later. But it has nothing to do with that October 5th portion of it.
My, my thing is, these minutes will come up in the future as written.
They are correct as written. So at, at the first meeting, there was an approval to change the position. After reviewing the applicants and hiring someone, there was a reissue to revert the position back to its original rating and title. That took place on 10/19.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, beginning with select person Ayer, please.
Ayer, no.
Erin, these are for the 10/19 minutes. We already voted.
That's fine. I have a no, I have a, a, a yes. I'm on to Vice Chair Knapp, please.
Knapp, aye.
Seco, aye.
And Artikoff, aye. The motion carries. Thank you all. Staff report by Administrator MacGyver.
Yes, thank you. Just one quick thing that isn't on the agenda. Today, the select board received a letter from the police chief in the town of Lee. I sent it out electronically, but I think it's worth hitting the high points for the community's benefit. It's a letter of recognition for the assistance that Barrington played in the incident at the Market Basket Plaza. And I think the, the chief hit some high points talking about textbook de-escalation techniques employed by all of the police officers involved. He was specifically appreciative of the, of Chief Joy, Sergeant Eric Baker, and Officer Michelle Cludier for their assistance and, you know, providing swift response to the direction of the chief in a stressful time. And everybody was very appreciative of the result, not leading to the harm of anybody, including the individual that's taken into custody. So terrific recognition for our police department. And I wanted to make sure the community was aware of the town of Barrington's involvement and appreciation expressed by the town of Lee.
Okay, thank you.
George, did you have your hand up?
I had my hand up because I didn't hear the town of Lee until the very end. And it, it just had me worried. I want everybody to know that the three officers involved was, was tremendous. I have to say, I'm glad that they're finally being recognized by people outside of Barrington to show you just how well they perform.
Absolutely. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Municipal Office Administrator Cottle.
Thank you very much. Just real quick, two administrative abatements for taxes. They're actually both for the same property due to a software error stemming from the exemptions and credit deadline having been extended this year. It's just a minor correction. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, up under old business is a reduction in funding request for ReadyRides, a service that is provided to Barrington residents to get them to medical treatment.
So you have a copy of the letter that I.
Why do you want to speak to that?
Yes, you have a copy of the letter that I received. I think the folks at the ReadyRides organization recognize that communities are making tough decisions budget-wise across the board. They evaluated their financials and felt like they could get by with a reduced reduction or reduced funding request from communities. Barrington has traditionally budgeted $1,500. They've reduced their requests down to $750. We already, you know, went past this part of the budget. So I, I will go ahead and change that budget request down to $750, unless the select board would like to keep it at 1,500. But I think if they're requesting 750, we can certainly plan to provide that.
So can I just get a roll call vote on the consensus on that? Moving it down to 750, beginning with select person Ayer?
I'm on the fence because Barrington's pretty spread out, spread out. And it's tougher times coming next year, I feel.
So I would suggest to you, the option is to reduce it to the 750 and consider the following year when things are tougher, as you're indicating that the board at that time addressed the issue.
All right.
Select person Bailey, are you comfortable moving it to the 750?
I, I'm just, if, if Mr. Ayer has finished voting, I will say yes.
Yes, I'm done.
Select person, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Seco, aye.
Artikoff, aye. Thank you very much, Connor, for bringing that to our attention. Next up is the acceptance of the Tax Record Preservation Grant that was well-written and adopted in order to preserve, I think, two more of the tax ledgers. The town has been awarded $3,705 through the program. Is there a motion to accept the grant?
I'll make a motion to accept the grant.
Okay. And I have a second by select person Ayer who raised his hand. I could see him on screen. Could I have a roll call vote on that, beginning with select person Ayer, please?
Ayer, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Seco, aye.
Artikoff, aye. You guys are moving through things. Connor, before we address C on our old business, do you have anything ready to review on the Highway Garage office improvement? Connor, before we address C on our old business, do you have anything ready to review on the highway garage office improvement?
No.
I didn't see anything. Can we table that, please, for another meeting?
Oh yeah, it was just, it was just an update anyways. I just wanted to make sure the board stayed in the loop.
Okay.
I got a question.
Did you, did you want to share that update, TA McGyver?
I'd be glad to. So, um, as it says in the report, the, uh, road agent's going through the motions of, uh, preparing for a semi-permanent installation down at the highway garage. Costs rose pretty quick when evaluating a septic system and, and suitable location. Um, and Mark, being a taxpayer in town, uh, kind of felt like, hey, I, I want to make sure that this is actually the best option before I just go spending the town's money this way. Um, so right now he's collecting, um, some information, uh, trying to get some quotes for, uh, what it would look like to, to meet the town's needs within the footprint of the existing highway garage. Um, doing a renovation to the, um, side area where the offices are now, um, and, and closing in a couple of the other areas. So, uh, Mark is working diligently on that to prepare some options for the board at an upcoming meeting. But I just want to make sure that you stayed in the loop, um, as we proceeded through that process.
Air, I have a question.
Go ahead, select person air.
Well, this all came up as safety concerns. Have all the safety currents been met and the ABC allowed money for emergency purposes? So how are we going to address this now? Is it still emergency or how are we addressing, using talent funds on this?
That's a great question. So as far as the safety concerns in the immediate, uh, in the select board meeting following, um, when we first talked about the, uh, highway garage addition, um, I included an item list of the, uh, mitigating actions that were taken following that meeting in order to mitigate the safety concerns in a temporary fashion. And so we, we implemented those tactics, um, the week following, the week of that select board meeting. Um, and what I said in that report is that bought the town some time, uh, to properly evaluate, um, the, what's, what's best for the town. Um, as far as use of funds, the, the use of funds, it wasn't, uh, a use of emergency funds. The, the select board uh, still has the ability to expend, um, unexpended operating bud, budget funds, um, without any emergency action. So, uh, the same funds that the select board contemplated for the trailer would be available for any additional work, uh, if that answers your question.
Any, go ahead, select person air.
They'll, they'll come back in front of us with, um, a budget number.
Absolutely. Much more details.
Go ahead, select person Knapp. Vice Chair Knapp.
Yep.
Oh, you muted yourself again.
You muted. Go ahead.
Yep, I got it. To echo some of what Dan was saying is this was originally raised out of a safety concern, um, which if they're looking at suddenly renovating in the new space, I want to make sure that we continue to look at addressing the safety concern and we don't, um, just go back to old practices just because we build out the existing space into something that we want.
Absolutely. I appreciate that feedback.
Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, TA McGyver, would you like to speak about the 2020 tax rate?
Yes, very glad to share with the board that Barrington's one of the first communities in the state to be issued a tax rate. Um, that's due in large part to the hard work of the finance staff here in Barrington, but also at the school district. Excuse me. And so Barrington's tax rate was set at $22.77, which represents a 10 cent increase over last year, um, which is, which is, uh, a remarkable result of the effort of, uh, folks certainly on the town side and the school side. So there were increases. The school increases were about 4% uh, by my calculations and the, um, the impact of the tax rate was, uh, reduced based on added value. So, you know, a lot of times the select board talks about, um, as a matter of policy, expanding the tax base and how that's good for town, the town, and this is a perfect example of that. So the Barrington tax base expanded about 1.7% or $20 million in value between 2019 and 2020. And so that added tax base was, uh, was essentially able to eat up the majority of the increases on the school and county side, uh, in order to maintain a relatively stable tax rate. Um, and so that's a, a, a positive impact of the policies set by the select board. Uh, the municipal tax rate maintained, uh, a steady $3.69. And so that, this now is the 10th year in a row that the town side tax rate has been level. And again, that is a remarkable result of the effort by this select board, previous select boards, but also town leadership, um, throughout the years. And so I think it's interesting to note that, you know, 10 years ago, the town side of the tax rate represented 21% of the overall tax rate. Um, and Barrington has continued to grow over those 10 years. And currently the Barrington, the municipal tax rate represents 16% of the overall tax rate. And so I think, you know, when we look at the number of people we're providing services to, uh, based on the number of residents in town and the development projects in town and everything like that, to think that we're doing that with a decreasing proportion of the amount of taxes folks are, are paying is remarkable and again, um, reflects the hard work of the select board, uh, department heads and staff. So I also included, uh, attached to my report, the insert, which will be going to, uh, in every single tax bill, which will go out this week. And so the first page really highlights tax rate information. It shows the history dating back to 2015 and a breakdown of the state county, uh, or the county education and municipal portions of the tax rate. It also includes a summary of information about our available exemptions and credits. And then on the back, just some notes from offices, uh, some updates, an opportunity to get, uh, some information into the homes of every taxpayer in town. So happy to answer any questions, but again, very positive news from the Department of Revenue Administration, uh, and certainly during these economic times, I hope that the, um, you know, uh, small increase in the tax rate is received favorably in the community.
Thank you, Connor. Um, next up is the November 3rd.
Has his hand up on purpose.
Oh, Vice Chair Knapp, did you have your hand up or just forget it was up?
No, I think I just forgot it was up.
Okay. So I'm going to move on to the November 3rd election and the select board requirements for that day. So I did speak with the elections director at the, um, state today because we received, um, a notice from last year's election and I think we were all under the impression that there were pro temps being assigned anytime there was not a quorum of three select board members throughout the day. And apparently at some point, the elections official that, um, reviewed our polls did not find a listing. So I've broken out the November 3rd schedule, eight in the morning till noon time, noon to four and four to eight. I can be flexible that day and cover absolutely any of those four hours. But I do need to make a list for our TA and the town moderator of what shifts people will be covering so that we have a quorum of either pro temps or select people when the elections official comes walking in. So go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
Um, I was just going to state that is by far my busiest day from a calendar end, so I would request that I have the evening slot.
Okay, I'll list you there. Go ahead, select person air.
Yeah, I can do the evening slot too. I have, um, three appointments on that day and, um, I got a finishing job, so four o'clock on, I'm good.
Certainly.
But in the midst of the morning, I might be available as soon as I figure out, figure out the commitments.
Okay, go ahead, uh, select person Bailey. You're muted. I'm sorry. I'm George. You're muted.
A lot of people wish it'd stay that way. But anyway, moving on, I turned around and I, I can do the morning.
Okay.
And, uh, are we going to have further discussion on this?
Um, I think so in one moment. Jim?
Thank you.
Well, it looks like we only have one, one spot left available. I'd raised my hand, but somebody missed it. So, um, what was the midday schedule?
Um, it's 12 to four.
Okay. Well, I will try and make that happen.
There's a, there's a okay. Um, and I will, George, I'll cover morning with you. So that will, that will still mean that a pro tem is required, one from eight to 12, two from 12 to four and one from four to eight. Have you made that note, Connor?
Yes.
I, I would prefer that ahead of time.
Eight, so that way we just need the two people or three people from noon to noon to four.
Is that easier to cover, Connor?
Yeah, and, and I, my, um, my memory was the same as yours that the, um, there were pro temps. The, the deal was that there's plenty of election workers and all that has to happen is you're a pro tem, you're a pro tem. And so I'm, I'm not exactly sure what transpired to make, to have the elections official lead to the conclusion that no pro tem was available, uh, especially because I was present, um, as a pro tem as well. But I think you make a great point. If we have a posted list that has names and times, um, that will make sure that there's no daylight between what has been agreed upon and what people ask questions about. So no, I think any time slot would be equally easy to fill. Um, I will certainly be one of them for each time slot. I'll be there all day. Um, and I'll make sure that we have names on paper for the other two time slots from 12 to four.
Okay.
So I will move four to eight, or four to seven.
I've got Andy, Dan and Jim from four to eight, understanding that you may be there later in the evening because of all of the absentee ballots to count.
I can come back. I have to.
Uh, I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure what the process is going to be for the absentee ballots. We should probably ask that ahead of time.
Um, that should be monitored.
So I will send, um, just a quick note via email that we require one pro tem from eight to 12. The George and I will cover eight to 12, that there will be three pro temps from 12 to four and that we will have three select people after business hours from four to 8:00 PM that evening. Go ahead, select person air.
I'm, once I figure out my appointments, I might be available eight to 12. From four to eight, from 12 to four, definitely not because I can't get out one appointment for that.
Absolutely understood.
I'll keep you posted.
Okay, very good. So Connor, if you would send the list to us, we could have it on our phones. But please also send it to the town moderator and to Kim, please, so that there's no confusion if the election inspector comes in and asks what's being covered, that it's covered.
Absolutely.
Because it was all of our impressions last election that, that that was the case and it was covered. And I, I would hate to see us receive that note again. Go ahead, select person Bailey. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, it, it's kind of more of a question, Madam Chair. I noticed that because the RSA were there, so do you have any idea what our rate of pay is going to be for those four hours?
I will say a couple of things on that. The, the, uh, there are many communities in the state who pay their select board members the election wages, same as any election worker. Uh, and I, I certainly would, uh, be supportive of that. And if the, that was, uh, something the select board wanted to do individually or as a group, um, I think that's perfectly appropriate. The other thing I wanted to mention is I know, um, that in, you know, with social distancing and, and the, uh, who folks are going home to and, uh, everything like that, there's the, the only thing RSA state is, states is that the select board member has to be present at the polling place. And so I, I would think, um, you know, there's no requirement that the select board member is actively engaging with the public or processing ballots. Certainly I would imagine, you know, you'd want something to pass your time. But there's nothing to prevent the select board members from being, uh, outside or in an open air area near a door or anything else. So, um, I, I would encourage the select board members to be prepared uh, to be in an environment that makes them comfortable, um, as long as they're at the polling place.
Now, is the polling place, is that mask required?
No.
Or, okay.
Masks strongly encouraged, but, um, nobody will be turned away for not wearing a mask.
Okay, on to, um, so we've settled that. We'll be getting a listing and it will be also available to the town moderator, Kim, and to the election inspector. Uh, we have a 2020 exemption and credit analysis. At this point, we were to ask any questions that we would like. We're not discussing this issue as a whole tonight, but what questions of materials would we like our town administrator to prepare in order to respond to any changes we might want in these, um, exemptions and credits? Do you have questions that you need answered for, before that next meeting?
Nope.
Select person air, what's your question you would like answered before the next meeting?
Are these on tax rate for tax base exemptions and credits or? That's all, that's it.
If I may, Chair Hardikoff, just real quick, um, in my
Under new business, um, yeah?
Oh, sorry. I think that there was a delay. Um, the, I'm fine taking requests for additional information, um, prior to the November 2nd meeting. So certainly if there's other questions trickle in, I'm okay with that. Um, and I, I did just want to make sure that, um, I know we have one new member. Um, but this report of exemptions and credits is a summary of what assistance is off, offered to taxpayers in town. So you'll see the summary on the front page, which is up a little bit from last year, but then all the details. And the benefit of the details is comparing where Barrington, uh, is with exemptions and credits to the county and then the state. Um, and so certainly if, uh, anybody in the community had questions about the information provided or any board members, happy to answer it just the same. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So, um, under new business, we never bring up issues, um, unless there is a quorum that will allow new business. And under right to know and transparency, I polled the select board to discuss the violations of the RSA 66417, specifically violations associated with the, I assume GOP of Stratford County, where they are posting candidate signs on Eversource polls. Um, I received responses from two of the select board members that would not like to raise this issue. One and myself that would, and I did not hear from Vice Chair Knapp. Can we bring this up under new business?
Do you want my response on it?
Yeah, you'll be the deciding factor of whether we discuss it or not.
Yep. I, I feel like it is, uh, it's a fail from a political end, um, whether we do or we don't. So my feeling on it is I'm just not willing to get involved in the idea of signs anymore. We already sent a note to Eversource and we addressed it a while back. Eversource has made their let that stand.
Very good. Select persons reports, please. Can we start with select person? Go ahead, head select person air.
Uh, there hasn't been a town lands meeting by yes? You hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Dan.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah.
Committee lately, but I have been contacted the chair and our town administrator is working hard on the behalf of town lands to set up all the information for the auctioneer and stuff. So he would have more to say than I would. Um, and then the conservation committee, um, I'm glad to have new members and stuff. There hasn't been a meeting yet.
Select person Bailey, report out, please.
Thank you very much. I, uh, attended the, uh, zoning board of adjustment. We had three cases. The first case we approved had been on the budget for well over four months. And we finally put everything together and that was approved with stipulations. And then there was two other ones, uh, that was for, uh, just for variance. And, uh, so both those were approved. So that was the, uh, the ZBA report. And the library canceled their meeting last week, so it's rescheduled for tomorrow. So that's my report.
Thank you, select person. Uh, Vice Chair Knapp?
Yes, um, the, excuse me, the, uh, planning board met this past Tuesday. We had, uh, Jen Chris from the Stafford Regional Planning on and that meeting has been November, or that, uh, work with them has been continued to November 17th. Um, we had, uh, George, who's the attorney for, um, Barrington Shores Campground, who got on and Barrington Shores Campground, who got on in presentation about the campground proposal. And there was no decision to be made on that because we still have not received information. Water District and the impact of the expanded campground has on the Water District as well as their position and take on it, including their request from, or waiver from two of the proposed land use rules. So that's all I have.
Select person, Sokoshia.
Okay, we had the trunk of treat on Saturday and went well. Still trying to see where this COVID is going to go as far as making decisions on upcoming seasons and whatnot. And they're working hard.
Okay. And I have no report outs from meetings because I was attending a professional meeting when ABC was taking place. Next up is the section for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, they can use up to three minutes of time per person, maximum of 15 minutes. I have started a timer. I am going to speak during public comment. I also see that Richard Walker has his hand up. Go ahead, Rick.
Richard.
You need to unmute yourself, Chief.
Yep, I did. So three things real quick, two on the COVID front. Today, I picked the state of New Hampshire acquired through a grant, 300 decontamination misters designed for ambulances at no cost to the community. I picked today, I got to do a little research and see exactly how that's going to work, but we're, we are a little bit excited about the fact that we were able to acquire that at no cost to the town. Obviously, we'll have to buy the tablets. They gave us, I think, 100 tablets. And if that works out, then we may be able to use that in other areas as well. The other thing was, is the state announced a program on Friday where they're going to do, they're going to make rabid testing available for, right now, first responders. So we're looking into that program to see if that's something that is going to be reasonable for the town to participate in. And the last thing I had, and I apologize, I meant to do it, the 300th anniversary committee developed the logo, and I apologize, I do have a photo, a picture of it. I meant to get it to Connor so that he could send it out to you, and I did not do that today. So I will get that to him tomorrow and he can email it out to you. We're, we're pretty excited about that. It's a, we took a photo of Stonehouse Pond. Will Lenha took the photo for us and we had cut the, got the logo set. So that's what we're going to primarily be using to push the 300th anniversary. So we're excited about that. So.
Very good. So, and I'm going to speak for three minutes. So I'm going to set my timer so that I don't go past the three minute mark. So under RSA 66417, political signs are not supposed to be posted on polls. And as of last week, when a Barrington resident spoke of this, there were just four of these signs on our Eversource polls. And quite frankly, four signs doesn't matter. Quite frankly, signs don't matter. There's been a study done and they only impact an election by about 1.4%. So signs are relatively useless. I don't know why we spend so much money on them. But I will tell you that I don't like that we, as a select board, as the leadership of the town of Barrington, are choosing not to react to this. We have the right to find people for it. We have the right to send a letter to the violators, which clearly are the GOP of Stratford County. We can create an interim zoning ordinance and change the performance standards for temporary signs for a period of time when there's an election. And that would allow potentially the Stratford County Democrats to hang their signs way up in the air using a cherry picker and have them visible. It's not the issue of the sign or the candidate reflected on the sign. You and I have a responsibility as leaders to do something and we're choosing not to. And so I am going to tell you that going forward, before any other election takes place, I think I'm going to strongly encourage this board to decide how they would like to react going forward. Do you send a letter of condemnation to the violators? Do you take down the signs? Do you simply throw your hands up in the air and level the playing field and create that interim zoning ordinance? But to do nothing reflects very poorly on our leadership for this town. I sat and listened today and discussed line items worth pennies in order to save money for the town. That is not our only job. We are the leaders. We are supposed to set the tone. We are supposed to ensure that we do things correctly and that we use the RSAs before us to be sure that that's done. So before my timer goes off in 37 seconds, I'm going to turn this over because I see there's another person who would like to publicly speak. Go ahead, select person, Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to say that it belongs to both parties as to what's going on. Some of you are familiar as to where I live. And with the beginning of this election cycle, with everybody putting the advertisements up, I used my right and I posted my signs out in front of my house. And then one morning when I go out to take the trash out to be picked up, there is no signs that they were missing. So after driving around the area, let's say best three quarters of miles to a mile circumference of my house, there wasn't one GOP sign. So in three days, four days, there wasn't one Republican sign and it was all replaced with the GOP. And then in a couple of days later, all the GOP were gone and that's it. So if you drove by in the neighborhood yesterday, not today, you'll see that both parties have come out and put it there. As far as the, going on the trees, on the trees, excuse me, on the polls, I feel that's something that we should discuss in a more civil manner and do it ahead of time so that we can have it done. It's not something that he said, she said, or they said. It's something that we need to look at and say, we do that. But at the same time, we have to be critical of the fact is that we don't pick one particular party. And also the fact is if we're going to do that, it's going to affect the individuals that put up there for their lost animal on the, on the pole, which becomes illegal, also for the people that are having a garage sale. So we have to consider everything we're going to do, but I still think that we all need to follow the rules and not put them up that high. Thank you very much. Sorry to take your time.
Select person, Sokoshia, you were next.
So I'm going to comment on the reputation of the select board. I mean, I don't think that this is the, the all hail knife in the chest of the town. I mean, we still are leaders of the community. And this is a very touchy subject with a lot of people. And you know, no matter what candidate was up there, and even if we had to pay to get them down, I just don't think this is really in the town's best interest. And that's where my leadership comes in, because I'm looking out for the town. And you know, before we end up spending $5,000 to $10,000 to go through and take all the signs down around town, there maybe needs to be a plan going forward. But to act on it right away, that definitely sounds politically motivated. Regardless who's on the sign, we're seven days away from the election and that's my piece.
Select person, Eric?
Yes, this is directed to you, Tracy. I respect you as a person, a human being, and your beliefs. And certain things I cannot support, but I respect your principles. Thank you for being a good person.
Jim, do you need to speak again? Your hand's still up.
Oh, no, I'm good.
So based on the public comments, I'll expect that future leadership of the select board will bring this issue up before the next election and come up with some type of solution for it. Any other questions, comments, concerns, or reasons for a non-public session tonight?
I have none.
Okay, seeing that, let's, let's break at 7:50 and call this the shortest meeting we've ever done. Hurrah for all of us. Have a good night.
We went over, we went over our time limit. The vice chair said 35 minute time limit. We went over, so.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Don't forget, Barrington Fire Department, that's how I feel.
Anyone opposed? Great. Have a good night, all.
Monday Night Football.